Good morning, we're gonna go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Roll call please.
Brandt.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Leyland.
Here.
We'll have a moment of silence to reflect our actions. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undying, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number one, agenda received as proposed or amended. So moved.
Thank you.
Motion in a second, all in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Item number two, public comments, is there anyone who wishes to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda? Room? Online? Item number three, presentations from the Sheriff's Office. Sheriff Neff?
Good morning Board, I'm gonna slide around this way. Again, this is something new that we're doing with Sheriff's Office that I wanna do, is recognize our promotions for people coming in. Normally it's gonna be one or two at a time, obviously today we've got nine here with all the retirements that we've had and all the promotions taking place. I wanna recognize all the work that they've done and give you guys a chance to meet them as well, so. We're gonna start off here and kinda go down the line. First up is gonna be my Chief Deputy Jason Chironas. Jason and I started the same day back in nineteen ninety-four. Been through a lot together personally and professionally, when it came time to choose my Chief Deputy, I needed someone meticulous, thoughtful, detail oriented, and that I trust a hundred percent, and Jason's that guy, so after thirty years, I became your Chief Deputy.
Great.
Thank you.
Perfect. Great. What's that?
Look this way.
Thank you.
One, two, three, thank you.
Next in.
So my wife's running a little late, can we have a line to go on then?
So Penny is related to Lance. So we'll see if Lance for a minute. Uh, next up is Lionel Brown here. Lionel's been with us almost forty years, last five years as a jail administrator, he was my lieutenant, my right hand. Helped me with just about everything through there, right by my side, sometimes maybe even a thorn in my side a little bit.
Sometimes at your back.
Yes, but uh, he's gonna be taking over as Captain of the Civil Division. And civil IT training, all of that stuff, look forward to the great impact you're gonna have in there. I could have you aboard there.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
It's been a while. If I poke you, I did it on purpose. Come on Lance. Harder than it looks. Maybe not.
There you go.
There you go.
I'll get a phone call.
Alright. Alright, next we go with Chad Hagerty. Chad's been lieutenant for a short period, um, he spent most of his career working in the jail as a sergeant in the jail, so when it came time to find a new jail administrator to replace me, he's probably more qualified than I ever was for the position anyway. So excited to get you up to the captain's rank, taking over the jail.
Appreciate it. My son.
My son.
Good luck. It's a terrible patch.
Nailed it.
Awesome. Thank you.
You all have to get here to connect with us.
Yeah.
Alright, so we got Penny and Ella here, so we'll bring Lance in now. A couple of other guys here, Lance promoted to Captain. You're fine.
It's all my fault, and she's like, I didn't tell him that until this morning, so.
I like seven forty-five.
Lance has worked on four divisions, but he spent the bulk of his career in investigations, so now it's just kinda fitting that uh, as the last year or two of his career comes down, he's getting to take over both patrol and investigations. One thing Lance, anybody knows, you can call him twenty-four seven, day or night, um, he's gonna answer the phone, and that's whether I need to call him up for a crime scene or for a personal matter, whatever. There's no doubt you're gonna get, you're gonna answer the phone, you're gonna be there. And I'm honored to be able to promote you to Captain Lance.
We'll get there.
Please.
Guess we gotta struggle on the line all the way to go.
Did you?
You were way faster than Eva.
Yeah.
Alright, moving on to lieutenants here with Justin Stafford. This is kind of a, kind of a neat one for me because Justin's dad, I worked with him side by side for many a year, so to see Justin, I've known him since he was this tall, and to have him move up through the ranks and to now be part of the commands, well, he's not much taller now, but he's a little bit. But uh, Justin's probably younger than a lot of our lieutenants are coming in, but um, he's definitely earned it. He's worked both the jail and patrol as sergeant, and I've done a great job for us, looking forward to you now as a lieutenant. Making that rank at a young age definitely bodes well for what the future holds for you. So with that said.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that. It's almost like you've done that before, Joey. Um, next up is our next lieutenant, Steve Haley. Steve spent the last few years as a patrol sergeant. Pretty, he gets probably the toughest assignment, second shift lieutenant, second shift's where all our new people end up, whether it's deputies, detention officers, booking, mask control, for the most part. They're all on second, so they get to be under Steve's watch here. Works out kinda nice, with Steve, you never really know if he's mad, if he's happy, if he's anything, he's just pretty solid, pretty mellow, um, pretty laid back, which you're probably gonna need going to second shift with all these guys. So uh, congratulations on.
Thank you.
The LT.
You got along with this dick. Oh yeah, if you stick me, it's up.
You can always just quit right there and not lie down too.
We're not hitting that second.
Just hang on.
There you go, perfect.
Thanks Scott.
Our third lieutenant spot, we got Zach Barclay coming up. Zach's been a sergeant in the jail for the last several years, worked patrol before that as well as the jail. One thing I love about Zach is he comes in with a little different perspective on a lot of things, very big push for uh, crisis intervention training, that kinda stuff, has a passion for mental health, mental wellbeing, and especially as law enforcement kind of evolves, that's the mindset we need, so I look forward to your impact, helping, helping with that evolution of the Sheriff's Office and with that mindset, so. Bring a lot of good leadership and a lot of good, just a different perspective from the quote unquote traditional law enforcement, so. Alright, down to the sergeants here, next up we're gonna do Brandon Mast. Brandon's got a little less time than the others, but getting into the ranks as sergeant, I'm excited for him. Comes to us with experience from Evansdale before he got hired here, and then he's been on patrol for several years. Brandon's just a natural leader, even without the stripes he has been, whether it's on SWAT team, on patrol, around softball team, whatever it is, people just gravitate to him, so I'm excited now with the actual stripes on his sleeve to see what you can do. You're definitely got bright future ahead of you.
Thank you.
And last but not least, we have Michael Jobe. Jobe's one of, been one of our most senior deputies in the jail, one of my greatest trainers. Doesn't just teach the how to do it, teaches the why, very detail oriented. He was a great trainer, that was my, my one hesitation for wanting promotions, because I lose you as a field training officer, but the impact you can have, taking that as a sergeant, I think is gonna be even greater, so. Jobe, glad to have you aboard as sergeant. Bring back these old retired guys to. HR is still here, Tom.
I'm not near enough.
Thank you all.
With that, we'll move to item four, years of service award. All through this to employees with twenty or more years of service.
Yes, we'd like to recognize Scott Norden with the engineer's office for twenty-five years of service. He is not present, but Kathy will inspect on his behalf.
Next we've got claims and payments, this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors, approve expenditures, and the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue payments against the various settlements of such claim as filed. So moved.
Good morning Board, our total bill payment today will be five hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-five cents. We are paying forty-five thousand, three hundred seven dollars, eighteen cents from the sixty-fourty fund. That is higher than usual, partly because we are paying the second half for an employee in our corrections that's in the jail, and that's forty thousand dollars. Other larger payments that are being made today, we are paying our annual payment to the state, or to the defense fund for this year. That payment is a total of two hundred thousand, two hundred and three dollars. That's something that's kinda set by the code. I'm trying to speak up. We are also making the first half allocation to all the rural libraries, well, all the libraries actually, not just rural. One hundred five thousand, two hundred thirty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. In the rural department, they're, they purchased the tire changer amount machine that they talked about in their budget time. That amount is forty-six thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars and thirteen cents. And I think that's all the larger items today, anything for us to eat or any questions?
We've got a motion in a second, it's the resolution.
Leyland?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Next we'll receive project updates from the department heads, elected officials, Captain.
Good morning Board, Kathy Nicholas, the roads are, both the paved and the power roads, these are pretty good condition right now. On our contract work, DCI is still continuing to work on the design of the project. We're gonna continue to work as soon as possible, just due to some of the order implications. That may taper off here, but our work is continuing, can I answer any questions?
We have any department heads? Alright. For address, either in the room or on Zoom. Next we'll move to the approval of the minutes from the December thirty-first and January sixth. So moved, second. Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. We'll have a hearing at nine oh five for bid opening for proposed uh, bridge repairs on Orway Road Bridge. Item nine, consent agenda, the following items, uh, this is a resolution, um, to approve the consent agenda. So moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same, oh sorry, resolution.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Onto other business, this is a resolution to approve Blackhawk County Regulation Title of Garbage Refuse, Yard Waste and Litter Control, Chapter eight oh five, that has been approved and adopted by the Blackhawk County Board of Health on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second, discussion? Alright, it's a resolution, roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Ten B, a motion that the personnel requisition for the legal specialist, full-time in the county attorney's office be approved as recommended by Brian Williams, county attorney. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
We all saw, does he know that it was just a replacement?
This is a, this is a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Item ten C, a motion that the emergency replacement of a failed recent interceptor at the Blackhawk County Jail, that costs twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars and eighty-six cents, be approved and signed by the Chair, as submitted by Rory Givney, Facilities Director. So moved, second. Got a motion and a second, Rory?
Uh, good morning Board, Rory Givney, Facilities Director. Um, during a routine inspection of this recent interceptor, it was discovered that the internal mechanism that separates the grease and sewer gases had failed, a pretty significant failure. Uh, so as a consequence, we removed the old tank, we had to actually relocate a new tank, and also discovered, uh, as we did that, a section of the eight-inch sewer line had shown some signs of pretty significant wear and tear, and so we went ahead and took advantage of having this hole in the driveway to get that corrected at the same time, so. Uh, just asked for the board to formally approve this, the work is complete, and was successful with minimal downtime, and uh, oh, just wanted to mention also, we are optimistic that this will actually help us also with some of the issues that we've been seeing, particularly in the intake area of the jail with some sewer gas smells. It's reasonable to think that with this failure, uh, some of that could have been coming in backwards, so. Uh, hopefully, uh, this will help that improve as well. So, thank you.
Brad, I have one question, I can attest, sewer gas smells and intake, one. Uh, what's the frequency of those routine maintenance inspections?
They come every uh, three months to pump those tanks down, and we also have a city inspector, the fog inspector, who will come on site during that pump down, just to make sure everything's working correctly. In fact, that's how we found that this uh, previous tank had failed. In fact, the internals of those tanks is kind of interesting, it was made of two-by-four wood structure. And so the new tank is all a hundred percent concrete, we do anticipate to about a thirty-year lifespan, if not more, on this new tank, so. All positive.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other discussion? We've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. MD, resolution that Title Six agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation, naming Kath- Catherine Nicholas as the county engineer, as designated. Title Six coordinator be approved and directed by the Chair, just sign for same. So moved.
Second.
Yeah, these next two items deal with the fact that Blackhawk County needs to follow federal law Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, as a condition of receiving federal transportation funding. Every year the Iowa Department of Transportation requires us to certify that we are following Title Six. The first, this first resolution names the Title Six coordinator, ask the county engineer, this position will follow Title Six requirements.
Any other questions? This is a resolution, roll call please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item E, resolution that the Title Six assurance between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Department of Transportation, stating that Blackhawk County will comply with the following statutory and regulatory authorities, Title Six of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Part twenty-one, uh, I'm not sure what CFR is. There it is. In order to receive federal finance assistance from the United States Department of Transportation, be approved and direct the Chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer. So moved, second.
This portion, the assurances, says that we will place the requirements in all of our contracts, contracts that we let out in order to receive the federal funding.
This is a resolution, roll call please.
Brandt?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes. Item F, motion that the personnel requisition for the elections manager, full-time in the county auditor's office, be approved as recommended by Karen Showalter, county auditor. So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Discussion?
Just my replacement.
Alright, uh, this is a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Item G, hearing and bid opening for proposed project L three zero three seven, bridge repairs on Orway Road Bridge eight nine dash one one dash three one dash zero two dash one zero.
Motion received, place proof of publication.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, uh, to receive and place on file, proof of publication, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. We have a motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received. So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No written comments, no?
Uh, bids to be received, opened and read, deadline was three PM Monday, January sixth, twenty twenty-five.
The first bid is received from Wheeler. Wheeler Lumber LLC. They have submitted the bid bond. Their bid is one hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred thirty dollars. One seven four, comma, four three zero, point zero zero. The second bid comes from Western Wood Structures, Tuallaton, Oregon. Their bid is two hundred eighty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty dollars. Two eight seven, comma, three three zero, point zero zero.
Did we have an estimate on this candy?
Our estimate was about one seven, one hundred and seventy-five thousand.
The motion, uh, to the Board of Supervisors, review and place on file, uh, the bid to allow time to review said bids as recommended by Kathy. So moved. Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next we've got a work session, uh, to discuss all aspects of the FY twenty-six county budget.
So I just thought I would review a little bit, starting out what we had last year. Our countywide levy for twenty twenty-five was five dollars and fifty-three cents. That generated two hundred thirty thousand and two hundred and nineteen dollars. The rural tax levy was basically three dollars and seventy-nine cents. That cap is three ninety-five, by the way. And that generated three million, six hundred ninety-four thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. And our, the total rural taxpayers pay a combination of both the rural levy and the countywide. So their total levy is nine dollars and thirty-two cents. And our total, um, tax asking's were thirty-six million, nine hundred twenty-four thousand, three ninety-nine. That was an increase over the prior year, about seven hundred thirty-nine thousand. Some significant things that helped make that up. Last year was an interesting year because our assessed valuation had a significant jump, almost nineteen percent, one point eight four billion dollars. But our taxable value only increased two point five nine percent, of course that's what our paychecks are based on, right? So that, um, valuation only increased to a hundred and fifty-one million. And that was due to a number of factors, the change in the rollback, the residential rollback was a large one, several other items. And this is just review, these are, as you remember, House File seven eighteen. And this is just review. These are, as we remember, House File seven eighteen log really changed our budget process, starting with the fiscal twenty-five year. We have to start doing a multi-step process for the budget. We need to provide our property tax rate information. Last year, we had to provide it by March fifth. The auditor's office was required to admit, send mailings to each and every property owner by March twentieth. We could not hold our first actual hearing until after that March twentieth date. And it actually made it March twenty-fifth, so we had ours on March twenty-sixth. We, we cannot set our second hearing date, which is our traditional budget adoption hearing. You can't even set the date for that until after you've had that first hearing on March twenty-sixth. And there's a publication requirement in there now. You have to have it in the paper, a minimum of ten days prior to the hearing. And our paper, going from daily paper to several times a week paper, it now takes, they want a whole week after we provide it to them to get it in the paper. So there, there's just a timeline in there that we can't really do much about. And then we have, last year, we were able to have our second hearing on April eighteenth. And we are required to certify our budget with the state by April thirtieth. Other provisions of House File seven eighteen that affected last year's budget for the first time, they limited the growth in taxes, or they hoped to. Well, they did limit the growth in taxes based on how much non-TIP taxable valuation increased. So if your growth in that category was less than three percent, then there was no restriction. And our growth was two point five nine percent, as I just mentioned, so we were not restricted last year. They changed the business property tax credits to become a reduction in taxable property value. And that is receiving a state-backed bill, at least for a while. They added a home ted- homestead exemption that used to be a credit that the state then reimbursed us for. Now they change it so it reduces the taxable value of the property and they are no longer replacing that. The military property valuation exemption was increased from less than two thousand to four thousand, so more than doubled. Again, that's no longer being reimbursed by the state. They also removed the ability for counties to exceed that three dollar fifty cent general basic levy cap and the three dollar ninety-five cent general basic rural levy. Previous to that, counties had some latitude that if you had a need and you voted to that, you could actually exceed that three fifty limit. That was very unusual. Cities did not have that ability. Um, and now we don't either. So there are more changes that will continue to impact FY twenty-six. Our growth obviously continues to be limited. And this year, our growth was three point one seven percent, so just over that three percent limit. But we, we will have a restrict- a restriction due to that. And it's actually going to reduce, um, about two hundred and thirteen thousand of general fund dollars. If, if we didn't have that restriction, we'd be able to generate more. Again, we already talked about the business property tax credits. They made the homestead exemption a two-step process, so now that is nearly doubling this year. And again, that exemption is not being replaced by the state. So this year's property valuation numbers, um, our total taxable value in the county is six point two billion dollars. So we do have some growth there. It's about two points, three point, no, so three point one seven percent. I'm sorry. Yes, three point one seven. And then the rural taxable value had an increase as well of about two point two percent. And here's a chart of the changes over the last ten years or so. You can see that rural has been kind of increasing slowly, steadily. And I think I skipped a page here. The total, whoops. Okay, the total county one really has some dramatic changes. You can see from fifteen to seventeen, that was about a ten percent swing. And as there's growth and there are rollback changes, that's just, it's really subject to a lot more situations. And it does seem about every three years, it, it plummets over these last ten years. So that makes me really excited about next year, but we'll see. Hopefully, we break that trend. Other factors affecting this year, our residential rollback fortunately increased by two point four percent. So a little bit more of people's homes are taxable this year, forty-seven percent. And just a reminder that the multi-residential rollback, multi-residential used to be taxed as commercial property at ninety percent. Now that is being taxed as residential, which is a pretty big reduction in taxable value. And the other interesting thing is with the business property tax credit repeal, the first hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of taxable value in a commercial business now gets to be taxed the same as a residential. So that's also going from ninety percent down to the forty-seven percent. Now it's over that one fifty or up to ninety percent. So those, those are just individual things that affects our total property valuation as we move through. Probably really already talked about this. Um, the interesting thing is here, when I talk about the three dollar and fifty cent general basic levy cap, the way that that restriction works, because our growth is over three percent, it, our limit this year will be three dollars and forty-six cents. And that level of growth does provide additional dollars under that general basic levy, and if you remember that, that's the one that we can use to fund almost anything, salaries, utilities, capital, if you want to. So we will get another four hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars in that general basic levy to fund our pay increases, other increased costs, or anything else we want to do this year. And I just thought I would put this light up with the levy trends. We have, you can see that since twenty-three, we've really been able to maintain a pretty flat levy rate. And slight, slight increase to rural, slight reduction to urban. And that's, that was really all I was going to talk about today, but that just kind of sets the table for all the, all the things that are coming. Any questions or anything else you'd like to discuss today?
Hey, you're prepared on Thursday for several, I think you had several budgets there that were going to be presented or something?
Yes, we have five departments that are ready to present, will be presenting Thursday. They are smaller ones, so I anticipate that being a relatively short session.
Michelle, you'd mentioned, uh, publication with the paper. So with the week notice, was it the paper company? Companies that wanted a week notice before publishing?
Yes, they, they require it now. It's, it's an interesting, interesting system, but yeah, they require a week, so. One, it just, we'll have all our numbers ready to go, but it, you know, we just have to provide it to them and then we'll get it in there as soon as we can. That's what puts it to at least the middle of April to be able to have. If there are decisions that you're still working through, then that could push it back another week. But we, we don't have a lot of flex in there, so you kind of got to.
When you say they, you mean, uh, state legislation, or is that the paper company themselves that require the week?
That's the newspaper. To schedule, to schedule their information and get it in the paper, they require. It stays technically, but basically weeks, so.
It's not local anymore.
No, it isn't local and it's, it's interesting. We've, this year, sometimes I talk to someone in Texas, sometimes, well, now they're out in Virginia, so we never know who's going to be watching our, our legal publications. And some of the shorter legals, maybe they end with less than six, but they generally want that six days for ev- all the things we put in paper. And it's, here and now, just everything. It's just their process now.
It's a good one yesterday. Because otherwise, they get such a mix now that it gives them at least that timeline to work it into what we need because that has, we have, had trouble with that.
It's, yes, it's always a little stressful, although I know it's printed because you never know if something strange has happened. So, but Bill, we work with it, so.
There, they have been proposals over the years, the state legislatures who moved to digital, um, but it just hasn't had traction yet, but. This might plug for publishing in the northern.
Pretty good levy, I think.
Well, the only thing I had, what I wanted to comment on, and maybe you've thought of this before, but I was going to say, we talked about kind of heavy-loading Thursdays, going to Thursdays. And Chris, I know you mentioned, it wasn't till after I thought about it, but you mentioned being gone on the, on the twenty-third, having some conflicts for that, so the third, that Thursday was out. And I know Justin, you're also gone next week for Isaac School, so that takes out two Thursdays.
Okay.
So I don't know if we want to, we don't necessarily have to decide today, but we need to look at, we want another day, or we want to go longer sessions, or what we want to do to, able to do to make that up.
I'm open to whatever.
We've got, we've got Ted, we've got strategic planning sessions every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday, yeah. Yeah, it's not like, and I know Michelle and I talked just a little bit yesterday and said, you know, if we have a light agenda and she's got something lights that she could throw in, you know, we could still have some budget session, maybe, but just not to go too long. Yeah, so that takes out at least the next two Thursdays.
Mm-hmm.
So do we want to try Wednesday? Well, Wed- I don't know, Wednesday or Friday or longer on Thursdays, I mean?
I mean, I, Wednesdays could work for me.
So like, you're off next Wednesday, though. It's Wednesday and Thursday, so not the fifteenth, but like the twenty-second. Are you thinking that would work?
Yeah, yes.
I can, can always dial in.
Oh, um, I mean, any options. I just meant whatever we, it was just all of a sudden when I looked at that and thought, oh, we've got two weeks where we don't have anything out there. What do we want to do? So everybody here too, Michelle and, yeah. Wednesdays are bad.
Yeah, I.
Wednesdays, Wednesday just happened to be tough on the fifteenth and twenty-second for me, but I'm sorry.
Fifteenth, because, because Justin's gone, so they just be the twenty-second. Friday any better?
I don't mind if they be with you. I don't know.
Sleeping more than.
I mean, look, I can always zoom in too and.
I mean, yeah. Should we try for the twenty-second to do, or the Wednesday, the twenty-second, see if it works for you by any chance to adjust the rest of this?
Yeah.
Then it's baby or.
We should for Wednesday, twenty-second.
Okay, does that, so.
How long would you like to?
Well, have we got several? I mean, we definitely think it's going to need two hours.
Twenty-second, there should be, I hope, a number, but it also has to work in their schedules too, so.
Sure.
I, I can't answer that right now, but if I know, you know, you only want it to be one hour because that's all the time you have, or if you have two hours.
It'll be.
Well, I can't tell you exactly how long it's going to take. I'll just try.
Yeah, I, I'd go for at least two hours.
I think it's got to be two, yeah, so we can not be doing this for two.
So the next Tuesday, are, are you thinking you would like the whole meeting to be two hours? The board meeting and the budget work session to get done by eleven, so you have a break before strategic planning?
Yeah. I mean, we should try for that, I, I think, too, see how agendas work. Sometimes there are things that could be pushed to another week if we see something come in on an agenda that throws us off, so we can make some progress on that idea.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the thirtieth, we would back to a Thursday, hopefully, it sounds like.
The Tuesday, yeah. First two weeks where we can.
Okay.
Would, would, would the seventeenth be out, like, off the table for anybody, or would that just be uncustomary?
It'd be a little tougher for me, but I could probably figure it out.
Like, like, I'm super flexible, uh, for the most part, so I'm just, I'm just throwing dates out.
Yeah. Well, we'd see so we can have some on the seventeenth, see what's available, see who's ready and could do something, and then we'll get back to this and see if it still works.
Yeah.
Maybe not, maybe we can just move on.
Yeah, I'll, I will have to figure out what I, like, can be ready and if there's departments that are here.
Yeah, because we can get some of those. You mentioned something with Leyland and that, Brian, uh, medical exam. I don't, just throw names out.
There, I mean, I know who I've got and what, where they're at in my pipeline, so, um, I'll, I'll figure that out with them.
Thank you.
So potentially January seventeenth, that's a Friday, and you're thinking nine AM, I assume?
Yeah. What, if, if it's, but if it's going to, like, be hard for you, then what?
Well, let me see. I mean, it's just.
Yeah, it's just, it's just have to look around, okay? Yeah, we pencil it in. Worst case scenario, I either zoom in or I just catch it on the, on the repeat. Yeah.
Yeah, but otherwise, if you're here.
Sure.
Sure.
Anything else on budget for today? All right, so we'll look forward on Thursday, your general assistants, veterans affairs, recorder's office, I T, and mental health patient advocate. Do we have any reports or information from the board?
I was just going to say, would there, would, should we throw in somebody else if there is another one? Can we throw in anyone else on Thursday? Just to make some progress.
I can talk.
See if there is, see if you want to. Someone ready. I'm in. Just to see. Okay.
We'll also have Tuesday, I guess, too, that.
Yeah.
Trying, trying to get us to.
Shift us to a.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, before we end, wanna say thank you to Supervisor Schwartz for the last year of stewardship, uh, running the, uh, running the meetings as chair, so we've got a little, little clock.
Good, thank you.
We heard that he liked that style, so we should have. Get him hooked up.
Repeating.
Yeah, it's been, it's been great to, to watch him, uh, lead the group and appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks much.
Thank you.
All right. Oh, you want a picture?
We do this occasionally, Justin, just at the end of a meeting or something.
Just, just pretend to do it again. All right, one, two, three. Thank you.
All right. To that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, meeting adjourned.